I'd like to call in the meeting to order a town council meeting for Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. If we can all rise for plus three.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and endless serenity.
Thanks for everybody being here today. I can see we have a lot of fun to talk about here. I'd like to do a roll call please.
Mike McLaughlin here.
Sidney Hoppy.
Marty Glissinby here.
Paul Edwards from here.
Sidney Bassler.
Mayor's Town Update. Since it's a budget meeting, I wanted to just update a couple of things that probably left out of the last meeting is our budget last year was slated at seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar in revenue. And when I was asking Mayor, it was, when I looked at it, I thought that's gotta be three hundred thousand plus dollars overstated. And we can report today that it was overstated by three hundred thousand plus dollars. And we saw this upfront. It didn't surprise us any. We had cut spending money enough that we actually cut spending by over three hundred thousand dollars, which helped keep our budget in line. And this is the one first year so I can remember for a while that where we just get to sell right through into the next year because we've actually have a little bit of a surplus because of not spending every single dollar and more based on our projected budget, which was kind of a train wreck when it took over. So anyway, I just wanted to add that in as Mayor's Town Update. And the other is, how we count. This is amazing that we have Michelle Kenny here. She's a one-year employee now of the town. This is why we have cupcakes in front of her. I tell her all the time how amazing she is and how lucky I am to have someone that's so awesome, working for the town and working for us. And if you've ever come in here and you need to handle something, you know, it's had a little smile on the way it's handled it. It's so well. And the job she does as far as recording and putting our package together, and she's a pleasure to work with. And so we got some cupcakes. We got a couple of dozen, I think is what we have, which normally is plenty. So I guess either they may be a little shy because I didn't know that.
I have more in the car.
Oh, okay. But anyway, so that's why we're having cupcakes and celebrating. It's because of Michelle. So anyway, we thank her for what she does for the town. I'd like to move that we open up a public hearing for Jepson Canyon Resort Final Plan approval.
Thank you, Mark.
Vote.
Aye.
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 So we'll open the floor up to you guys for any public comment. Yes?
Blackhawk Walters, seventeen ninety-three, runway. I know most of these people. They're good people. They're salt of the earth. This project is fantastic. The things it can do is just totally, totally amazing. The problem is, it will not work here because nobody's paying attention to our aquifer. From my report, we paid forty thousand dollars for in two thousand fifteen. We discovered that we were at a negative at a hundred and three million gallons. We don't know how many years that went on. Since that time, now, just on my count, we have a hundred-room landscape hotel, forty tiny homes, forty designs getaway, trailer rentals, an RV park on the agenda for a hundred and five rentals, cabins for a hundred and seven on Main Street. That's four hundred and twelve negative more gallons. That's two hundred and thirty-seven million gallons to the negative a year on the aquifer. If this project goes through, it's much more than all of our, there's two hundred and twenty homes. They're talking about four hundred and forty houses and a hundred and eighty lodge. And it's all wonderful and great, but our well will go dry in five years if that opens up and that happens and gets full of tension. We do not have the water. That's what our survey we paid for says, and it's gotten worse, and it's not going to get better. So it's about the water. It's about nothing but the water. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Rich Coppel, eleven ninety-three, East Big Canyon. So does that include the Canyon Springs?
No, it doesn't.
The Canyon Springs acquisition.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
It still comes out of the same aquifer. It's water. It's like a well above ground. It's fin bucket tested, three hundred gallons per minute. So it's a water source, but it comes from the same aquifer that we're draining.
Yeah, so my understanding from my conversation with Harold Merritt is that spring water comes off of the mountain, which is different from down here. And the other issue is, when these guys come down here and turn on these pivots down here, that's a million gallons a day that they're pumping out, having homes there that significantly reduced compared to having pivots out here, water and hay fields. Does that answer your question for you?
Yeah, that's the true statement that you said, but we haven't stopped that water from there. We're just, there's more water rights than we have water. So when they turn those pickets on, rock bills, wells go dry. Did you guys know that? They had to go with Springdale to get the water because Springdale comes off the Virgin River. We only have this underground aquifer. That's all we have. When it's dry, it's done.
Where's your proof?
That's what I want to know. What's all your proof?
The truth is in the survey that's on the town thing. Just read the survey.
That was the layout for a little thousand feet down is the whole underground river. It's not in that study.
And how many thousands of dollars? Well, John paid the four wells.
Excuse me, we need one person at a time, please. Margaret Osowski, one of two for West Little Canyon. Okay, for years I've been going to, since it became a water, the water district became a water district, I've been going to those meetings and I've been saying exactly what Blackhawk said. However, that board and the chairman of that board says we have more than enough water for all this. So who's lying? That's my end. That's my question.
Let me interject a couple of things. The chairman's not able to be here today because of some family commitments. But my conversation with him was that we have plenty of water for this project. And the infrastructure, those two things that you have to keep in mind on this project, they're bringing in water shares to supply these homes. So we're taking water shares that Blackhawk's talking about that are out there right now that could be used to drill a well, to farm, to do everything else. And those water shares are going to be coming into the district, which restricts the usage of outside because they now become our water shares. And so that makes a difference where whatever it is that they're building, they're bringing water shares to help pay for that water, so to speak. And so these water shares are already existing anyway, and they're going to be ours instead of theirs. And that's the difference on it. But in this whole project, there's also a million gallon tank that's going to help improve the infrastructure of how we're going to supply this water. Show on front row first. Go ahead.
Janet Prentice, fifteen sixty-seven, North Fountain Drive. If we have so little water, why are we selling to Hilldale and the Gap? Are there water?
Well, we're not selling yet, but they probably are asking, you know, that question's popped up. So yeah, that's a good point.
Professor, twelve forty-one, Desert Drive. These hills out here, all been left, three years without getting water because the guys lost the lease on them. And they barely turned them on last year for a very short time. So it's almost been four years without getting water. So that not being used had to replenish a big chunk of our aquifer. So that study's probably a little bit outdated, is all I'm saying. Especially with our wet spring.
Margaret?
Margaret Osowski, one of two for West Little Canyon. According to science, it takes years, hundreds of years to replenish an aquifer. So if those people didn't turn their pivots on for a couple of years, it's not going to make that big of a difference in your aquifer.
The other comment, I think that the chairman of the water board, Harold Merritt, would provide you is that my understanding is it's four hundred and fifty gallons coming out of the Canyon Springs. And we have water running on top of the ground out there. So there's two sources there that we're not even tapping into that are running on top of the ground as well. And that's enough water in that one system, as soon as it's hooked up to everything, to provide water for all of Apple Valley. And it's spring water coming off that mountain over there that's different from what's in the valley right here. Go ahead.
Tamontoyos, Smithsonian Road. Are they watering this golf course or this lake with our spring water?
Do you want to respond to that?
We, our sewer treatment plant is reuse water, the golf course, and all the irrigation water will come from sewer treatment water that's cleaned up.
They clean it up enough that they can, oh, water's grassless. I think it's pretty awesome. So it's.
That's awesome.
As well, we need to check with the, sorry, can I, as well, we need to check with the Army Corps of Engineers, but if we're able to capture that water, if we're able to capture that rainwater in the wash, we can capture it, recycle it, use it, and continue to irrigate with that as well. Because did you know anybody who's been up that wash is a mess when it rains? And so if Army Corps allows, Army Corps allows to capture a portion of that, we'll have plenty of water to do work. So it's all secondary water.
Yeah, hey.
Unfortunately, I don't have any proof of this. But when I first started this project a long time ago, I had hired a water expert who has since passed on. And he said that there is an aquifer about a thousand feet down. There's a river coming down through our valley over there. So we're planning to drill down. We have a well over there. We're planning to drill down until we get into that. And he said there's enough water there for a million people for a million years.
Oh, please.
He was a water expert. And so all I can say is, that's what he told me.
I thought the water rights were going to be in the towns, and he's talking about drilling wells up walls.
Well, you can drill a well. You just have to have water rates to use the water to get out of a well.
You're going to put that water into our town system, into that.
Absolutely.
And they're going to be paying to pump that well on their property. That's part of the deal. So that's going to help not name the top aquifer further to pull them out of the ditch.
Blackhawk's agent. So when you put the water back in the ground according to all the books on water stuff, you get five to fifteen percent of that water back. So you can catch that. A lot of cities have done that, but it's again, five to fifteen percent. They did do a test, a bucket test, and it's three hundred gallons a minute at that aquifer. Again, you got to, I get you got to understand.
I just want to let the chairman know.
But you got to understand, Mayor, that it's coming from the same aquifer. You can drill, and you can drill, and you can drill. You read a survey, they suggest not drill. If he drills there, he could cut off the water for us completely. It's coming down the hill. It's coming in the valley. We did this golf course, golf cart, golf course stuff not that long ago. Coach Pellet was going to go over there and build five hundred homes. I did the same thing I'm doing now. I said, there's not enough water. Just like all the people in the room, I don't know what I'm talking about. They ran out of water doing grass, growing the grass for the golf course. They ran out of water. They didn't build the first home.
I think that was a funding issue, but.
Margaret Osowski, one of two for West Little Canyon. By state law, are they allowed to capture the water in the wash?
Well, that's what he said is it's up to Army Corps and the state to decide. But it's not a matter of, I think it's, I'm not sure capture would be the right word.
Harvest?
Yeah. Yeah. I was thinking if you have water go in and you have a way for it to go right back out, it's.
Let me.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I thought the state of Utah owned all the water that comes down from the sky.
Hey, do you want to comment on that?
Well, keep in mind that that wash has been there for many, thousands of years. But that land was seized in a land grant in eighteen eighty-one by the Jepson family. So if anybody has the rights to their water, it's probably the Jepsons.
With water rights, you're allowed to collect a certain portion of water. If that's where you're getting your water from, of a wash or something like that, as long as you have water rights, then they'll allow you to collect some of that. But you still have to give permission from them. You don't have water right, you can't touch it.
Yeah, Rich Coppel, eleven ninety-three, East Big Canyon.
I'll get it right.
No big deal. So I'm a little confused here. How can there be such a disconnect when we sat here, I sat here many times before the Canyon Springs acquisition, and the chairman said, that Canyon Springs will give us enough water for eternity in Apple Valley. There is so much water coming out of that mountain, we can't capture it, and it's going to, it'll last us forever. So are you calling him a liar? I don't understand what the disconnect is.
Can I respond, Mayor?
Sure.
We've been hearing this about the Colorado River forever, too. We know how big that is. We know that it feeds seven states. Lake Neade and Lake Powell are part of that. Lake Powell is at forty-five percent. It's never coming back. Lake Neade is way down there, too. If you've been paying attention, April the sixteenth, the President of the United States signed a bill that all fourteen senators from all seven states that get off the Colorado River have agreed to cut back because the Colorado River is doing less than it was twenty years ago. So they have just teachers signed that they want the Colorado River. We can all see that. We see much with this. When you say how much is in a well or how much is underneath the ground or how much is in the springs, it's all against us. Nobody really knows.
So you're still going to answer my question? So what are you, so you're just saying that the chairman's severely misinformed with his information?
Um, I can't respond for anybody else. I know the mayor thinks he's doing what's right. I know everyone of those council members are doing what they think's right. I wouldn't even think about running for mayor. I don't want to. I'm going to sit on my head and play my guitar and live my life. But I can see our town turn into a ghost town because we're running out of water. I can't speak for anybody else but myself. And I'm sure each one of these people are doing what they think is right. And I'm just being aware, letting you know, that our aquifer is in trouble. And if I get elected, I'm just going to work on getting that water fixed. That's all I'm going to try to do. I'll do the other stuff. But these guys all have different responses. You can look up the surveys. You can read the stuff. That's what you got to do. And make your own decision.
So basically, when we purchased the Canyon Springs, we were all under the false impression that Canyon was going to be our do-all good and we were going to have plenty of water.
Yeah, I guess Harold Merritt doesn't know what you're talking about. The other comments?
Changing the subject a little bit, this property that we're discussing, there were some lots divided in twenty fifteen that did not fall state rule and town rules for planning. They're not approved. And I'm just wondering, can you explain that one? And was, when is the plan to approve them?
Well, you're on the planning commission, so you should send the mayor an email and let him know which ones you're concerned about. And we could look at them, but it's hard to answer that.
I tried to avoid doing that, but I will if you want me to.
Why would you avoid doing that?
It doesn't do any good.
What do you mean? I've invited you down here before on issues like this. Show me where you're at.
And my two chances. Didn't do any good.
What do you mean, doesn't do any good?
There was no point getting into it right now. I'd just like to answer my question.
Well, you and I, you and I have, I've called you myself on another issue, and says, come down here, show me what it is you're talking about. It's always been this right. And so now you're bringing up in a public hearing that.
And we've had that discussion.
Yes, you're on plenty. All you have to do is.
Get it all straightened out. I don't have any intention of coming down here and talking to you face-to-face, so absolutely none. I've done that.
Look, because I might, because I might learn something from you and be able to figure out what it is that you're having a problem with.
If I did, I'm figured out what I have a problem with, then I guess there's not much more I can say.
Yeah. All right. Thanks for your comment.
Did I get an answer to my question?
Was there a question?
I didn't, I didn't hear your question. I invited you down to show me what it is that you have an issue with, so I can.
Do you not agree that those lots are unapproved?
Sorry?
Do you not agree that those lots are unapproved, lots?
I don't know which lot you're talking about because you haven't given me the information on it. So that's. And I'm quite honest with that information.
If you want me to find the lot numbers, I can find them. But it's the property that we're talking about, the Jepson Canyon.
To be re-zoned for us, is that the hard part?
Uh, six of them.
What was that, what we're doing right here, when I'm down here to discuss?
Re-zoning is different than approving a lot.
Let me, let's, let's back up one notch here, too. Because you're on the planning commission, and you voted to approve this in the last meeting.
I did not vote to approve this. I was not there. I was sick.
Okay, you're, the four people that were here, they voted to approve it.
They did.
And you're on the, hang on a second. You're on the planning commission, you could have brought this to the chairman's attention at that time via email or phone call or whatever. If you have a problem coming down here, talk to the mayor.
Too late for that. It was all voted.
It's not too late for that before the meeting. You know it's coming up on the agenda. And then you get the agenda. It doesn't take but a phone call to say, Cynthia, we got a problem with this or that. Did you make that phone call?
I didn't think so.
I didn't think so. Anybody else?
He can know what he's talking about.
Yeah.
There are six different parcels. They are not the lots. We have two entities in this company, in this project. One is Jepson Canyon Resort Development. One is Little Creek Land Company. And we transferred from Little Creek Land Company to Jepson Canyon Development, some of the property that's going to be developed, but they are not lots. They were never intended to be lots. They won't be lots.
When you, when you transfer property, though, and you, if you, if you don't, if you're changing any kind of, in other words, changing ownership of a parcel is okay. If you change any shape of it, then it creates a new lot. And that's what he's talking about is there's a new lot created that's not approved by the town.
Okay, well, they weren't, wasn't intended to be lots. And they're all included in this zoning change, like I mentioned.
Right.
There was a call someone's.
Different concept? Did I get it wrong?
No, no, you did very well, very well. I'm saying that zoning is a totally different concept from plating. That we're never plating. But it's a state law. It has to be plated when they're divided. And he should know that. Bad precedent, we can ignore that. But no, I'm coming.
Sorry?
I just said it's bad precedent, ignore it.
Well, you know, I got a little of you for, because you're on a planning. And, you know, if you're going to catch this kind of stuff, you can bring it up to Cynthia, the chairman, and address these things at a proper time. That'd be helpful if you've got an issue with it. Instead, we're, we're sitting here with a recommendation from planning to approve it.
I understand that.
You know, based on the planning commission doing their job so far up to now, what you remember of.
I understand that.
Anyway, anybody else have a comment? Yeah, Dylan.
Dale Harris, Water Superintendent for SSLE. I'd like to give just a little bit of clarity on our aquifer and how water rights work in our aquifer. There are so many water rights that are basically assigned to this aquifer in the Big Plains Basin. So the deficit that Blackhawk's referring to is that, and it says this right in our aquifer study, is that if everybody that has water rights in this basin wants to be utilizing every bit of the water rights that are in this basin, that creates a three hundred and thirteen acre foot deficit. That's, 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 you know, Big Plains is eleven hundred plus acre feet. That's Evans Browns is, good Lord, nine hundred and some acre feet. That's every one of these little wells all over for this aquifer city. The springs is actually different than the aquifer. That's not part of that, which we had acre, fifty acre feet to come from that. So the theory is on that aquifer study is that if everybody was to be utilizing every bit of the acre footage water that happens in this aquifer, that would create that three hundred and thirteen acre foot deficit. Right now, where we're at, the district has a sustainable amount of water rights, the district themselves, for building that happens, managed building, I'll put it that way, that happens in the Big Plains Basin. So here, let's, let's be reasonable, because everybody's had their opinion on this. This aquifer and the water that happens up this aquifer can be here for five million years. It can be here for five minutes. If Mother Nature decides to shrug and sends a crack into our aquifer, our water can go away instantly. So that deficit is, is, that deficit isn't present right now. It would have to be all of the acre footage actually being used, whether it be agriculture, it will be culinary use, all of that would have to be in use at once to create this deficit in our aquifer.
How likely would that be to happen?
Well, our aquifer study puts us out. Our aquifer study says that in twenty forty, the projection is, is that we would, that Big Plains would be using about, I think the number is a hundred and sixty-five acre feet of water in, in twenty forty for managed building. So what I want to reiterate, folks, is that when you look at the acre foot and you have a water right, you have, you have water on paper. That doesn't mean that you actually have drinkable water. It all depends on how long that aquifer is going to last. That's what that aquifer study is for. The aquifer study says that if we're using every acre footage, and I roughly went through that after I went through the aquifer study, there's close to three thousand acre feet of water that's actually owned by different people and different water rights that happens in here.
On our aquifer?
Yes, on our aquifer. So if you start adding that up, there's a lot of water right now. I would say as your water manager, I'm all for there being some type of growth in town, but we've just got to be, we got to just manage it right.
What does that mean by our static rate? I hear, I hear the talk of that.
When we bring something major like Jessup Canyon that comes on, that we just, we're doing what I do for a living. And we're monitoring our static levels that happen in our well and see if we notice this growth, you know? And then we have to coordinate after that. On, on paper, we have a lot of water rights. This whole basin has a lot of water rights. But to predict what an aquifer study, this is just my opinion. Blackhawk brought a good point. You know, they can say with the Colorado River that they projected it's going to last this long, but if it doesn't rain when it's supposed to rain, and if it's snow when it's supposed to snow, this is all the gamble that every town deals with across the country, is that if Mother Nature is going to give us water, and if they don't give us water, we're no special than anybody else. You look at when Vegas was going through its growth, boy, things looked good. Like you're building in the desert. If it doesn't rain, you don't have any water. On paper, this basin has a lot of acre footage of water. So whether it gives you clarity or gives you mud, that's, that's my take as your water manager on, on the aquifer.
Thank you, Dale.
So basically, you're saying we have roughly three thousand acre feet of water, right?
Not, not Big Plains.
Right.
I'm saying the Big Plains Basin.
The basin. But Big Plains, what the town's projected growth, according to that, in twenty forty, we're only going to be in, in the water district, going to be using a hundred and sixty-five acre feet out of three thousand.
Out of our eleven hundred. Right now, we're a little bit around eleven hundred.
But out of the three thousand that's available to the, to the whole aquifer area.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
And like Blackhawk said, I'm all about, folks, dealing with education and facts. Our aquifer study is online. It's, it's on the website. Enter it and read it. And you'll see what I see. You'll look for anybody that reads that aquifer study, and read it and educate yourself on the aquifer study.
What I read on it, too, is that in twenty forty, one was on projected growth that we have, even then, more shares than we need without even asking any.
We need to be clear on the terminology. We have no shares in this. We have water rights. There is no shares. We are not a.
Let me correct the terminology then. So we have water rights, even after twenty forty, that we still have abundant amount, more than we need.
But I'm not going to stress you guys.
Without even asking for.
But I'm not gonna stress you guys, is there any education here? Is it on paper, yeah, we have the acre footage. On paper, we have, but paper and water, as we all know, are two different things. And I think everybody that's held water in this room will agree with that.
Ripstop 1193, he's Big Plains. Now, is the canyon spring part of that equation that you're talking about, Dylan? Or is that, is the canyon spring over and above?
Well, it gets complicated, because you have, just like you have on surface water, you have tributaries that happen in an aquifer also. That canyon springs is actually outside of the tributary, because you have your, you guys are testing me, the Owen Kobe and the Jurassic, Jurassic and the... Say it.
Shiloh.
Uh, that's not the other one, it starts with a... Anyways, you have these different levels where water is coming out of. So, in theory, you're close to on the canyon springs, but you're actually not in the same aquifer that we're actually pulling in. You're in the level above the aquifer that we're actually pulling in underneath the ground. Now, I'm a water guy, but I'm not, you know, I haven't gone up there with a chisel and a hammer and, you know, figured it all out and see where it splits, but it makes sense to me on the surface that this all comes from the sky. The water, the chisels, and just come about from underneath water. So, it just depends on where that water is lit, where the water is coming most. Mark said, you know, about recharging aquifers, that all depends on the depth of your aquifer. Hilldale is dealing with some situations right now with their well, and it's because they're getting, because of all of the rain that we just had, they're getting some surface infiltration, it happened within months. They were getting surface infiltration into their wells, and I'm not gonna go into their business, but they've got some serious violations they've gotta deal with right now. That's their business, not mine.
Can I ask Dylan a question?
Absolutely.
So, Big Plains... So, this aquifer, Big Plains aquifer, whatever, I don't know which one it was.
Basin.
Basin. What does that cover and which towns does it cover, or how far does it go, or, so people know?
Well, the Big Plains Basin essentially goes from, the Big Plains Basin, if you look at it geographically, actually is, goes a little bit into Hilldale, captures all of the canyon gap. You're clear up on the Smithsonian Gute Road, actually all the way out to, I forget what the name of the road is, starts heading kinda on the, towards the Arizona Strip, but square miles, fire number, right? We're about 65, fire number X, square miles. No, that's not, that's too big, that's mine, that's my pipeline. Yeah, we're somewhere...
So, does it serve as Rockville?
No, well, aquifer does, not the basin.
Okay, so...
Not the aquifer, so like what Blackhawk referred to, he's exactly right. I was the guy that called Springdale into Rockville. We figured out that when Evan Brown would fire up these pivots out here, Rockville's aquifer wasn't charging. I grew up in Rockville, that never happened in the history of Rockville. Back to water and back to paper. Rockville's got the acre footage to take care of their town, but if their aquifer doesn't have the water, and their water rights are just, that's what it does, it's just piece of paper.
And that's what I kept telling the water district, you can't do that paper.
Mark, what we gotta realize is that this gamble happens all over the world, happens all over the world. It's all about, it's all about what water is saying, but God's gonna give us out of the sky. And if it doesn't rain, it doesn't rain. We could have water, we could have water forever, and we could not have water forever. That's the gamble that every community takes, whether you're pulling off of a surface, out of an aquifer, out of a lake, snow runoff, it's the gamble, it happens. So, that means, you gotta remember when it comes to water, folks, it's all just that. It's a gamble that we're all taking, we all take that gamble. It's nobody's right or wrong, it's just a gamble that's taken. And it's just gotta make sure that we're making the right gamble, that's all.
Thanks, Dylan, appreciate it.
Very good.
Hi, I think we're 1424, roomway. Now, something was said about a story, I thought we had no suicide present or future plan for this.
We're gonna be installing system.
Okay, what timeframe or...
Then you will be installing a system for their...
Oh, just their community and they'll do God's work, so they have the cleanest of the water and then, okay, so it's just that one community. Okay, thank you.
Yes, have any questions or comments?
Of course, King, and King very green, we're doing a zone change tonight, we haven't talked about general plan amendments. Is that seem okay with everyone? We've got something like 43 acres, general plan for residential half acre, and we're changing those all to commercial. I would've thought we would need to do a general plan amendment, but it doesn't sound like we're doing it.
Well, it seemed to me that the planning commission would have handled that, if that's what they needed, so... Those are the ones that handle that, you're on the planning commission, so I got a little defer to you on that.
I'm just acting a private citizen here.
Yeah, but you're also on the planning commission, and you bring up issues that...
I don't set the agenda in the planning commission, you set the agenda in the planning commission.
I don't set the agenda, Cynthia.
Oh, I've been told that incorrectly, yeah.
Well, I help Cynthia, but I don't decide everything. This is not, you know...
Just as the one that usually sets the agendas together, they're always, they always go through Cynthia. The mayor may have input on what he'd like to see, but it always is Cynthia.
I always do it.
I honestly think no one really thought of changing the general plan until I thought of it tonight. So, I'm not sure what that has to do with the planning commission. If they didn't think of it, and I'm thinking of it now, then maybe we need to think about it or get a good explanation as to why we don't need to change it. If we don't need to change it, then why do we have it?
What does the general plan say right now?
It says half acre residential, and we're changing it to commercial. Uh, 3 acres well, there's some other...
Any other comments?
I have some questions from developer thoughtful.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, this is supposed to be a final plan and ours is just a wall of stuff, and the word that's called for in the final plan, but we don't see it, or at least I don't, I've never seen it, maybe you guys have a packet?
We have engineer drawings on most of stuff, so we didn't put it in our package today.
Do you have, do you have phases listed? I've never seen that, I was on the planning commission, pointing out they weren't there, so...
Janet Crennis, 1567 North Mount Zion Drive. The planning commission has been working on this project for three years now.
Not this project?
Yes, we have.
You worked on Village Many Nations, this is about 10...
No, we worked on Jessup Canyon, and I have paperwork to prove it.
And you've been on the planning for some...
And believe me, I have the paperwork, I keep everything.
And you can tell me where the phases are?
Yes. In fact, I'll send you all the, I'll leave, I'll bring it next Wednesday.
I'm not understanding why you haven't...
It's when Jack, Jack was the head of planning, and they're closer to us.
Well, it's quite well...
And you did bring up all this stuff with the planning commission.
I was thinking that being sorry, I assumed there was an actual title, I'm sorry.
We've had two meetings with them, and you've been in one.
Right, I was one, and questions weren't allowed, so...
You're on the planning commission, you can always raise a question.
I don't mean to ease in, it's a, you can't out, I'm pretty easy on that stuff.
I don't wanna talk. Just real quick, if we need to change a couple of things we're talking about, when it goes to them, they just tell us, hey, let's do it to the plant. You guys are up here right now, if that needs to be changed, why don't we go on and get it changed and move on already? For dangerous, we're sitting here talking about it.
Well, we can't, we can't do it that way. It's gotta go to planning for a general map change, and we can look at those, you know, so what we'll end up doing, tabling this, any approvals for today, just for, and then on the next planning commission meeting, we'll put the general map on there, we'll put a lot line adjustments on whatever lots that he's saying are incorrect, and we'll get those loaded on and corrected so they're approved and so...
I'm fine with that, or an explanation as to why we don't need to do that?
I don't have an explanation why we don't need to, I, you know, I trust the, you guys to do what you need to, and I just find it interesting that you wait till tonight to bring this up instead of, you know, bring it up to the chairman. And that's, you know, you're on the planning, that's your job to say, you know, I have a problem with this or that, to the chairman. This is even before the meeting starts, so that way we have some reaction time that allows us to, instead of just stalling developer day after day, year after year in this case...
We're about stalling the developer year after year, so that is a blatant lie.
I have the history right here.
Well, I've got more history than you, I'm sure.
You're older than I am, but all...
Order in the court, order in the court.
I have more than a question.
My name's Art Latkey, I work with the Village Many Nations with Hank and David and Kent. Two months ago, David did a great PowerPoint presentation, it was up on the wall. That was in front of the planning commission. It went over all the phases, everything. When it was done, we got basically an ovation for everybody up there, and it was sitting in here, complimenting us on it and couldn't wait to see it start. But I know it went over all the phases, and it was told that only two phases of the project are starting.
This is election season, though. Election, I'm sorry, they gotta make me look as bad as they can, so...
I might help you look as good as you can, and my boss is a good friend of mine.
That's the goal here tonight, I'm sure you see.
Can I ask about the lodge? Uh, one of your brochures talks about 120 room lodge, another brochure talks about 180 room lodge.
It's 180.
It is now 180.
Corrected that on you in the master plan? Yes.
Uh, yeah, maybe on the, in the master plan, we're on the west side, so... Oh, okay, we ignored your west side. Um, another question on the lodge, one last question on the lodge. Uh, they talk about it being a log building, is, are all the 180, is it 180 rooms now? Are they all in the log building, or is that, are they in a different building?
There are four separate buildings.
Are they logged?
And they are all logged.
Okay.
Two stories.
Everything on that whole development's gonna be a log look, by the way, the whole entire thing.
I would've thought that...
Any last questions? I move that we post public hearing for Gibson Canyon Resort Final Plan.
I'd say the motion.
Vote? Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you, you guys have any discussion you wanna help right now based on public comments? How do you feel about the general map not being correct? I mean, is it something you should go ahead and go to...
Do you wanna look at the general map right now?
Yeah, we have it, I'll be right around two. Um, anyway, because it probably should be... Yeah, it's not that hard to put it back on the general map, but... So, in the process, Michelle, the general map change, is that required or not? And is that a three-day or a seven-day?
Everything for town council, it's going to be a 14-day.
It'll be a punt mission.
Yeah, but any land use changes are 14 days, they also have to be 14 days before a town council. That's a town ordinance, not state.
Well, I just wanted to push this off to a planning commission, let's do a general map change, and we'll find out from Forrest, hopefully he'll send an email. Cynthia's afraid to come in and talk to me, and...
I'm afraid to come in and talk to you without other people present, I'm sorry. I'm just throwing a picture, I'm throwing you.
I know, I'm such an evil guy. You know, I'll throw in something here, you know, I called Forrest even before this meeting, and we were talking about a whole different piece of property, and I said, Forrest, come in here and show me how it is you find these things, because I wanna get better at this. Can you tell me where it is that you find this information, that this is an illegal lot? Come and teach me how to do it. And this is how mean of a guy I am, I invited him in and said, come help me. Instead of doing that, it's like, let's spear the mayor into the town council meeting, so, anyway.
I do wanna point out, I put together a very nice email explaining how to do that, sent it to, saved it to smoke a lot of guns. You gotta flip a couple of times here and there.
Where's the flip button on here? How come I can't see it, John?
Well, I don't either, I'm trying to...
Something on view. Anyway, um...
Oh, there it is, hello. Okay, but now I gotta get back. How come it went here?
What's more?
Twenty.
Two more.
One more, Michelle.
That's this area right here?
Yeah, that area you just pointed to. The three lots I'm discussing are the bottom of that red boot shaped.
Right here?
Yeah. They are general plan, half residential, half acre. Now, I don't, maybe the attorney would say this is all fine, and we could ask him, and if he said it's fine, I don't have a problem with the laws, we're saying we really are supposed to change it.
Can you roll out some more of the talk? Some of the, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we're putting in, is half acre residential.
You're putting in some of that...
I know some of this is commercial, that small pieces.
We're resuming it to PB, commercial, PB residential, PB not commercial.
Yeah, PB commercial.
And that has to do with lodge and planetarium and the Village Many Nations, I mean, observatory.
All the good stuff.
Because it's more of a mixed season, so it's gonna have residential on it.
Are you actually on the general map change on this?
Is this the 2006 man?
2008.
2008?
It's the only one we got, anybody's knowledge.
This is the one Cynthia and I have been trying to update.
Can you guys speak up, I can't hear what she said.
Uh, yeah. Within lines. So here's the, uh.
She had that.
She could've put it up, yeah. So this is the G S H right here. And this is the, let's look at our layers on this. So it's all half acre right here. That will be commercial right here, maybe also commercial on there.
You guys have to talk so everyone can hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Sorry.
Are you showing up there, I can't see it right now?
It's different from this map. What I'm doing is, we, we paid Ensign a lot of money to update our map on a different one and this is a type of dated map and they're, they're both a little different, but this does not show the commercial world we need, Forrest, and you look at the.
Are you looking at twenty fifteen map?
No, hang on a second.
If you are, it's ninety percent wrong.
That's not what we're looking at.
Okay.
That's the one way you, you worked with Ensign on to all, all that stuff, we paid fifteen thousand dollars to these guys to do this map, that's the one I'm looking at right now. Michelle could put that one up, but it's, I'm looking at her.
Mayor? Marty?
Yeah.
Isn't the whole idea of this needing to zone change it from whatever it is or was into plan, plan development?
Well, the, the promise would be we change the general map to, you know, lots, if it allows to zone, and that's what I'm trying to determine, is what the general map says. And I'm looking at all these designations on here and there's nothing here that says mixed use on our general map anyway. On our map right now, we don't have a single designation there that says the general map that really matches this project at all. All right, Paul. We have some illegal lots and we have, apparently, that have popped up. I think we have just, at least in this next meeting, to give the town to review this based on public comments, so.
So I would suggest, I would suggest to the planning commission that we have everything that we need to make, to answer, to answer the questions. So on that night, nobody can come up and say, hey, but, which is ridiculous, these guys have been planning this thing, what, ten years or longer?
Yeah.
I think it gets a little bit ridiculous at this point.
They have come to the town and then gotten some approvals, conditional approvals?
Right.
And then abandoned and.
No, no. It's never abandoned, it was subject to a developer agreement, it never happened. And they, they paid money a long time ago for developer agreement and here we are this many months later and it frustrates me that we have this recommendation from the, I'm talking, we have this recommendation from planning commission, which you're a member of, and, you know, now you're telling me I can't act on it because the general map is wrong, yet look at the general map and there's no designation that says mixed use on here that we could even change the general map to. What would we change the general map to? Most of it's residential.
I would suggest commercial for the, for the three lots that are going to be commercial there, and all three lots are commercial.
It's, it's, there's not any one lot that's gonna be commercial.
Oh, yeah, there's at least three. Spend an hour looking at it, it's a waste of time. I can show them to if they need to. Why, maybe thirteen forty, forty-one and forty-seven?
For what, for what purpose that, Forrest?
I don't know, I remember his purpose, ran it on something observatory and then, huh, wasn't, wasn't focusing on, on the purpose, I'm too, the purpose. This is not to mention the big parcel went from about twenty acres commercial to something like eighty acres.
What's your, what's your take on this, Hank?
I think he's missing more, but give him a copy of the latest plan.
I've got a copy right here, my history's there.
We've, we've done a development agreement, we've done all this, I mean, I just can't imagine, you know, after ten years and I'm still sitting here filling my gums.
Well, listening to this, we all have a general map, right? I don't blame you.
Forrest, what are those plot numbers, is it plot numbers again?
Thirteen forty, forty-one and forty-seven, I believe. Let me, let me see my top of the map on the ground.
And by the way, the reason we did those changes, three years ago, we had preliminary approval subject to a development agreement and the water sewer treatment plan, and it never happened. And we've been through three mayors since then and it's just never happened. And we changed those because of the conditional approval that we had at that time. We can change them back, that's not a problem.
So you're saying we don't need them that way?
That's what I suggest, Mayor.
We have the power to go ahead and get this passed and then put the, put the amendment that it'll go back and get the proper changing on the map. I know the maps changed, it changed when we changed it, so how do we know it's even, you know, it's the record, these guys have gone through this stuff? And we go through and just get it changed and avoid the, the hassle, go back to planning commission, the planning commission's approved it and if we need to go amend the, the map, let's go back and amend the map, make sure that those Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, get it done. It's already been approved.
What's, what, to make a motion how you feel like that you wanna make it, so we're on item three, is that right, on our agenda right now?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I can't see why we can't just get this, we're, we're the planning commission, the majority voted to pass this, get it going forward, and our job is to fix our problems that we have, not hold these guys up.
My favorite comment is, they did have three stations two months ago, it's, it's not like this just happened last week.
They were sort of master plan, they were down planable.
So. I, I make a, I move that we take, and we're on discussion number three, right?
Yes.
That we accept the project and the zone changes for Apple Valley thirteen thirty-seven, A dash one, dash A, dash one, dash A, Apple Valley thirteen forty, Apple Valley thirteen forty-one, Apple Valley thirteen forty-seven, Apple Valley thirteen fifty-two, A V thirteen fifty-three, A V thirteen thirty-eight, dash A, dash one, Apple Valley thirteen thirty-eight, dash A, dash two, from O S T, O S C to P D R and P D C for the Jepson Canyon Project, Little Creek Land Company LLC, and that the town will correct its map and go through the planning commission, make sure that we have made the changes that we need to make on the zoning and have those noted today.
Hold on a second.
Bill?
Aye.
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 All right, we have, we have a lot of discussion on the, the water issues and we have tons of, we have none of it and I think we ought to just take curve number four, or you guys feel like we need to allow this to stew a little bit and see if there's any other public comments that come in, or are we ready to vote on this project?
I think that if there were anybody else that needed to be here to make a public comment, they would've been here.
And how do you feel about the comments, where do you feel like we're at on this? Sorry, Marty, Marty, this is closed public comment right now.
I'll turn in a public comment.
Well, I think they go by the recommendations of our water board and when we look at the project that we have in front of us, they're being unconsciously, unconsciously minded on taking care of wastewater problems and the water coming here, I don't think they wanna see this project fail, they want, they're gonna put millions of dollars into this project and with our cooperation and their cooperation, I think we need to work for these guys and work with us.
And I think we should go vote based on planning commission.
Want to turn that into a motion, somebody?
Okay, I make the motion that we accept the Jepson Canyon final plan?
Bill?
Aye.
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 Let's go back to our, item number two. So we're kind of out of order here, we're gonna go back to the fun bar of the evening, which is the budget hearing for fiscal, fiscal year 2020. And I move that we open up public comment to the budget hearing for fiscal year 2020. Second, anybody? Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on budget issues. You've gotta be kidding me, you guys all came for the Jepson Canyon, we're a budget auction.
They're a fan club, we have them now.
I think you guys have done a great job on the budget.
We've got money to steer.
You know, considering where we started when I was mayor, we have come a long ways because we were in deep trouble, I had no idea how deep trouble we were until further we got into it, but we were destined for being way upside down based on the way that the budget was structured prior and the new positions they had slated for, new people being hired and all kinds of things, and we've turned the community into a volunteer community where we're getting a lot of things done, more than we used to, yet we're spending a lot less money and it's made a huge difference in our, I think in our community, the improvements we've done, and, oh my gosh, we're, we're, we have money left over, that's unheard of. Richard Fisher.
Richard Fisher, twelve forty-one, that's a address. So, one thing to help us with our upcoming budget is, I'm on the road committee with a number of other guys and as a lot of volunteers, right. Marty, Mayor, went to a state meeting a few months ago, found out that we are grossly being underpaid by the state for our roads that are in our area, most of the roads that we have in our area, we weren't receiving funds for, and we got together, we went over the road maps and with states, you know, what their guidelines were, and added a bunch to our roadmap, which is gonna give us probably, I don't know, about the whole, what our current budget was for roads and C I B funds for this next year or even sooner, so that should help us out tremendously to keep our roads and potholes and different things put together.
Well, previous mayors, too, have negated on doing a lot of the roads and any improvements because it's not dedicated and if it wasn't dedicated, they wouldn't touch the roads. What we discovered in that meeting, you're talking about it, that it doesn't have to be dedicated to get our DC roads on line, and we've been hauling cinders like crazy to improve a lot of public wells, cut it, cut it, the road, we made some improvements on Apple Valley five and, and we're doing all that and we still have money left over, so we're in good shape in that way.
That's Zion Drive, he did.
Not Zion Drive, yeah, we did some improvements there, actually Mountain Circle as well, but anyway, the, the roads are in better shape everywhere, you have Tom over here.
Yeah, Rich Rock, eleven ninety-three, East September, do we know where the, the overage in past budgets was in the revenue column?
How much do we have left over?
Well, do we?
We haven't finished the year, but.
Pinpoint where the, the overages were.
Forecast.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yeah, forecast, right.
Number one was the revenue.
No, but you, you have what items, can you, can you pinpoint where they, where they were?
Are you asking what the estimates, where they were overinflated on?
Yes, overinflated, yes.
It was a couple of new jobs that someone wanted to give to their family.
Talking about revenue.
Revenue.
In revenue. Building, I, I don't, you know, I don't have that luster budget in front of me, Ben is here, he might remember some of it, but.
Yeah, there was, uh, let's see, so part of it was some aggressive forecasts on, on building, 'cause a lot of the town's revenue comes in through building permits, which in turn translates to impact fees, there were some anticipated grants that didn't come through, those were the, I would say the, the building projections and the impact and the, and the grant, but it was two big contributors to the, I mean, the progress.
Well, there, there was some, some tax money as well that was estimated over, over aggressively, they had estimated raising taxes, if you guys remember, go back that far, it was a seventy percent increase in taxes and that was budgeted in there, that's something that was happening, and then they had a energy tax that was budgeted in there and even in their budget, they miscalculated how much that would be and it was not as much as what they estimated, so that was an over number as well. Yes.
I have a question about the brush truck you guys bought, didn't we buy that to make money and has it made any money or no?
That's a good question, it's, yeah, we, my understanding was they were going to go out and do some, at least some mitigation work on fires in the county and, our chief isn't here right now, but actually I question for you.
From what I understand, it hasn't made no money, it costs us money.
Right, that's, that's true, it hasn't made us any money, yes.
When, when your components were, so on the funds that were raised at the Chillicothe office?
Yeah.
What happened to those?
They go into a, the fire department's budget and a discretionary money they use for, I've, I've encouraged the fire chief, and we are fellow volunteers and I've encouraged him, whether it be doing training and meetings and whatever, to buy the group sandwiches or pizzas or something else and to, to feed the troops to, because they're kind of, take a lot of it out of their day, to come in and do some training and things like that, so pay a little things, maybe some shirts or, you know, it's his money, his discretionary money to decide what he wants to do with it. He has money left over from prior years he hasn't spent yet as well, but it's kind of his nest egg for, we, I just promised him when I was, brought his mayor, that I won't touch those money, those are yours to decide what you wanna do with those money, because it's, in the past, it was, Rick Moser was accused of taking that money and, you know, maybe it helped build a park one day or whatever, I'm not sure, but that's their perception of it and that's, I'll never touch it, so. Blackhawk, you raise your hand.
Yes, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I've looked at so many figures, when I was looking at the last year's budget, you have to put it in budget if you get a grant.
Correct, yeah.
And the grant was for three hundred thousand dollars.
I have to look back a bit.
The grant was for three hundred thousand dollars, we saved three hundred thousand dollars 'cause we didn't get a grant, so it's a bull crap number.
I, I believe that, I believe the grant in May, one ninety.
Okay, one ninety, so we got two hundred thousand.
Just about a hundred and seventy-two thousand, what it was, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, that we didn't get along on when he got those.
So you remember now, but you didn't remember a while ago when the gentleman answered your question?
Well, this is budget meeting, not a campaign speech, so.
No, he asked you, you messed around trying to look, couldn't figure out where it's at, it was from a grant we didn't get.
I thought it was pretty direct on my end.
I thought it was pretty direct on my end. But the point is, is we had way overestimated budget. We had overestimated expenditures, hired people they wanted to hire and you know, it's, we could have been in big trouble. Anybody else have comments? Anyone else? All right. I moved that we closed public comment on the budget hearing for fiscal year 2020. Bill?
Aye.
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 And so we have DAPA here, the discussion and action on the budget hearing. We're going to just do that in our next town meeting, but that was intentional, but we're, because we might have some tweaks yet. There were a couple of things in there that I had brought up to Ben. We have one of my, a couple of them I'll point out is like in the parks department, he had down here seem like around $800 or $400, what was it, revenue for parks. Shouldn't be estimated.
Donation, pardon your words.
Anyway, and Tish has committed that that's, number's going to be $2,000. And we've got two donations, $5,000 a piece. So we're changing that number to $12,000 for donations for the parks. And then we're also adding an expenditure item in there on the parks department for building restaurants. So that built into our thing. And my plan is that mayors will take the $4,800 mayor salary that July 1 comes available as well. And we donate that back to the town. So like, this is roughly $15,000 to, I'm hoping between materials and, you know, some donated labor that we're going to be able to some restaurants with that money. Food park. And so those are some changes on there that he and I have discussed prior to this being thrown out. We have another item too. Do you remember what was up here?
Yeah, it was a little conservative with the council training, especially where we have potentially new council members coming in next year. So we've increased the budget for council training.
And then the bottom line on this budget, we're still have about $8,000. Is that right? Is that what you have?
In the current, in the, the tentative, adopted tentative budget, it was $890,000.
Yeah. And that's, so basically what that means, when you look at the bottom line down there and you see total transfers, that was money that would go to PKO. But that's kind of a reserve fund right now. So we even have a built-in reserve for next year as well. Every, prior year, it's always been zero because they just plan to spend every single dime. In this budget too, I want to point out a couple of things that we've, as we've collected money for the storm line money, we're also showing that money as going out. We want to do that and help sequester that money. So we're not having money come in and it's promised to pay the home bill. That's not, you know, when you, in a general fund, the way we, if we add it to the top, but we don't take it out of the bottom, it's basically added to the bottom line, which is paying these other bills. And so we've made some changes to that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm looking down here on the line items first, like park department fundraises, fire department fundraises and everything. And I'm looking at all the revenue coming in, but I don't see a line item as we had last year for fire department revenue.
I, I asked Ben that question earlier. He just said that they haven't had any revenue. But I was thinking that we have something. I swear that we got $1,500 or something coming in. Archie, this is your wheelhouse right now. We're asking about revenue for the fire department. Didn't we have some last year for mitigation or?
Yeah, last year we did. Didn't happen this year.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, anyways.
What are you saying, this calendar year we haven't had any, or this fiscal year we haven't had any, or calendar year?
This calendar year, we haven't had any.
Isn't that correct?
Right. No. So we had two available firefighters last year that were doing mitigation. And from them getting jobs, they are not available for mitigation this year or haven't been. So.
The question came up because I didn't budget any fire, fire related revenue. And as I look back, maybe I wasn't looking at the correct general ledger code, but I hadn't seen any prior revenue from the fire department. So it could be that I was mistaken. Maybe, I mean, I don't know, if you, if there are any anticipated for this next, next year?
Until I get some, some more stuff going, I don't, I don't want to say that we're going to have, have done revenue. I don't know what's going to happen. So I'm trying to plan for getting what we have here on track a little better. And then the type three was really going to have some influence on what I did. And with that not happening, it's kind of, we're kind of still planning. So I have five new guys coming in to take some basic wildland class that I'm going to put on here for free. And that's going to happen first part of April. So we'll be teaching that class here.
April, June.
Word of mayor.
June, sorry. Couple months off.
Ten minutes or anything.
It already happened. Sorry.
All right, well, let's move on to our consent counter. So item five, consent counter for April 2019.
Have you, do you go text message about everything?
Questions?
I'm going to repeat the consent counter for April 2019.
Second?
Bill?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right.
Yeah, I have a little minute. I don't find any regular... I make the motion, we pass the town council meeting for March 20, 2019.
Second? Bill?
Aye.
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 All right.
Okay. Reports, events committee, Tish.
So we have an ice cream social this Saturday, seven o'clock, first one in the season. And we'll have a donation box to try and collect for our bathroom. So $30 bills and your... See everybody there.
I did what you said, you were pressing it earlier.
No, it's not so...
It was the weather, you said.
It's never stopped yet.
No. Bring the oats. Cool times for the mayor.
That's okay.
I got a planning permission down here. Are there any others with planning permissions? Fire department?
Yeah. So I've been working on the new CWPP. That's got to be updated with every change in the council or mayor or anything like that. So they're pushing me to redo that, which takes a lot of effort. But I was working on it today for two hours with the representative from the DNR. And for you who don't, for anybody who doesn't know what the CWPP is, that's our community wildland preparedness plan. So what that does is if we get a good sized fire in this area, they'll come in and assist us as long as we provide a good initial attack on the fire. And their assistance will be not free. I don't want to say free because nothing's ever free. But it'll be covered when they come in and help us. So once they arrive on scene, they will take over IC and they will take command of the fire. And that will pretty much negate our monetary support. So if they drop any tankers or anything like that, we won't be, we won't be paying for that. So. So it's a big deal. I should have everything updated hopefully by the end of tomorrow. Then with that though, there comes some community and town responsibility with that. So we will need a community fire council. So if we do not meet these standards, we will be liable for a fire that comes into our area. So there's a few, there's a few things that I'm going through with the DNR and everybody to get all that in order. So as soon as I get that finished and finalized, I'll run it through the council. And after their approval, we'll start working on getting a fire council set up so that we can handle the mitigation efforts in town.
What's the job of council? Is it just to meet and talk about the things that need to be done or what?
So that's something that will come up in each meeting. And what it'll be is, it'll be planning. It'll be discussions, actions. It will actually be, you'll set up a whole year's timeline pretty much on what goals are for, for our community and for the council to actually get to them goals. And if we can, if we can reach these goals, then it looks really good in the state's eyes. And they'll be able to say, even if we didn't, you know, meet our, meet our needs all the way, they'll still look at it and say, you know what, they were trying. So we're going to step in and help them out with this fire. So that's a big one I'm working on right now. Gosh, a couple more. The incident we had, let's see, a week and a half ago, Saturday night at 9:30. I don't know if everybody's aware of it. We had a motorcycle accident out here. So it was a pretty bad accident. When we showed up, well, when I showed up and then I had assistance from Hilldale a few minutes later. But when I showed up, there was, the individual had not been breathing for two minutes. So he still had a motorcycle on him. He still was face first in the dirt. And he, he, there was nothing wrong with him. So. So after that, on initial oversight, I, I checked for everything, assessed the situation and quickly grabbed the AED, hooked it up while I was trying to do CPR at the same time. Luckily, we had two responders from Hilldale show up shortly after that. They assisted with CPR with me. We got the AED hooked up, performed probably, I don't know, maybe five to, about five rounds of CPR, assisted CPR, until Hilldale actually showed up and started, their paramedics actually showed up. So from what I understand, from what we did, made it to the hospital. After we packed him out, my flight was unable to transport him because of the, because of the CPR and everything they were doing on him. So there wasn't room in the, in the actual helicopter for all the people that were switching off on him. So after that, they raced him down, helicopter, paramedics jumped in with the EMS crew, rode down to the hospital and from there they got a cardiac heartbeat on him from everything that was done from start to finish. I don't know the outcome. I know that there was not a lot of activity, brain activity. So I still don't know the activity.
He passed away.
Did he? Okay. So I know there was a go fund or something like that that was set up. That's about all I have. So.
Did he fall down or hit him or?
No, he was just off road nighttime and then another guy. And be very mindful of these roads that we have that are close to these ridges. All of these ridges, they drain. So those roadways are rivers. So they cut two foot, swallows in them from the water. And they're hard to see. So especially if you're riding at night. So. So he, he hit one of those is what we can figure and he just went straight forward. He's a hard pan. We all know the hard pan. Here's that concrete. So anyways, be mindful. I mean, we got a lot of off roaders. Everybody's been seeing them lately. We got a lot of traffic on our roads right now, especially weekends. So be real mindful of those people because they aren't really looking out. That's about all I have. Does anybody got any questions or anything?
I sent you an email. People are ignoring my emails. So I asked you right here, how do I donate to fire department?
So what you can...
I missed, I would say, I missed the Chili Cook Off and I don't know, I would take it out.
So you can come into the front office or you can come to me and then I can come to the front office and we'll just do it.
Just come in here? Okay. Oh, yeah. It's going to be cold.
The code enforcement. I want to... So I want to talk about code enforcement for me. I'm going to turn this over to Rich of Sausage, but I'm going to talk first if you don't mind, Rich. We have several issues with Conexes. Some of you might not know, some of you may know that they're against the ordinances to have Conexes. And I have to smile when I say that because we have our own out here with town offices. And we're in a commercial district, so maybe that changes a little bit, but it's, it's, it still makes me smile because it's like, we have one and yeah, we're going to tell everybody else again about it too. I, but the code says that it's no Conexes. That's shipping containers for those that don't know what Conex is. And I'm, we have a lot of complaints coming in on right now. And I'm not sure there's a lot of awareness out there that we're against the code or we're violating the code because it's, they're like weeds. It's bop bop everywhere. So we're going to be making some efforts to ask the community what it is that you like and don't like. And one of those is going to be Conexes. So we're going to be putting a questionnaire on the website that probably the next week or so or something. We'll have a question on the website. Talk us about Conexes. They're okay if they have siding. They're not okay at all. We don't like them, you know, in front of our house. We, they're okay if they're in the location. Whatever, I'm going to come up with a bunch of questions. We're going to ask all these. And I'd like to get some feedback. Is it, you guys love Conexes, then we got to change our ordinances and say that they're okay to have. If you hate them, make sure you respond as well that I absolutely don't like Conexes. And what are terms that they're okay to have? They're okay if they have it. And we're going to ask for some public comments. We're going to put this out on the graph. We're going to find out. Overall, 75% of people hate them, 75% of people love them, whatever it is. And then from there, we'll decide how we want to enforce these. I think for the most part, it's, even right now, it's okay to have them if they're in relocation and they're having siding or some kind of an exterior on them that makes them not look like Conex anymore. My goal is, is we put siding on our Conexes as an example to the town. And I'm going to make some efforts to find some funding for that to happen. So we can at least put some wood siding or something on there to help, to set the example for the community that we can make them look better than just having these steel buildings out there. And so my goal in trying to do this is, we have a lot of these complaints coming in right now. And we have to address them. What we have is a complaint about this person or that person. And we can't enforce it that way. If we're going to say no Conexes or, or it's okay to have Conexes, but the Conex has to have siding on it. We have to do that blanket all over the community instead of just one or two that we have a code violation. And so because of that, so we have a problem, I think this is a fair course that we ask everybody, how you feel about them? With that feedback, we can report and decide what the community wants to, in comments.
They're against code.
They are against the code right now. And so we're going to ask if everybody still likes that code or not. And I'm thinking that most people are going to say no. Would you like to have the, the graph? like to have the graph on the side that says that most people don't like them, or they like them, okay, if they have siding and they don't look like Conex anymore, whatever terms are, and I just think we need to ask the community how they feel about it, so.
Have they always been against the code, or is this a newer code?
It's been against the code, I didn't go back, our old code is so hard to determine when they were exited there, but I would say that it's been at least four, five years, be my guess.
I was wondering if any would be the grandfather?
Well, even grandfathered, I, you know, would like to hear from this, put some siding and make it more acceptable, but, well, that's one of the research things I have not gone back to, see, was it back in 2000, you know, the creation of the town, or, you know, just when it happened, I'll look in that original code and see if it's in there or not.
2015.
Janet's been around forever, she says 2015, that's what she thinks it has, so.
I think it's 2010, 2010.
You think 2010?
Yeah, 10, 11 maybe.
Anyway, we'll try and figure that out, but, Rich?
Yeah, a couple things, yeah, they are against code, they've been against code since I've been here, since 2009. I brought it up to the previous administration, and they pretty well told me, for instance, they parked a refrigerator Conex in a driveway for months, right in front of my house, and the code enforcer at the time told me, where do you expect them to put it? And I thought, well, I'm like, I'm wasted, you know, so eventually, they did move it, but they had one of their families, they were storing it there. With the aspect of Conexes, I have get kinda bombarded against them, the people have them, a number of them complain, and the people that don't like them do complain, because right now, I have a blue Conex set in the front for my street at the same house, and it's set on a vacant lot, so, and the neighbor has filled out a nuisance complaint on it, they didn't enforce it before, 'cause anyway, as people see them, and we've got more houses being built, they think they can bring in Conex. And I had that one person call me, he said, I'm building a house, how about my Conex? And I said, they're against the code, well, I see everybody else's Conex, so I feel like there's not a problem, and I actually had a discussion at a get-together the other day, and a bunch of neighbors were there, and they got kinda heated up a little bit on the other part, but we just need to address it and kinda put a halt on what's going on, because there're more people bringing them in. I know Conex, you guys all see every day, if you drive in Apple Valley, that they actually go home to, and I'm not gonna mention, but it just happens to be blue, so. You gotta kinda put a handle on something, but I have talked to a couple of Conex owners, and they might be agreeable to at least not only paint it, because the last code enforcer did mention that I have nuisance complaints, and they painted it, but they didn't paint it to the color of the house, and I said, well, that doesn't help either. So, right now, the nuisance complaints are coming in, I have one in my hand now, and maybe we could put the questionnaire out there, but these are all the rules that say you can't put them in, but nothing has ever been done about it, so any help, and maybe the input would help the mayor on addressing some amnations and say, well, a lot of people don't like them. I know one that's buried in the ground, so it's gonna end up worse. And the other thing, and just one last thing, I happened to take a drive this last Saturday, all the way up to many central Utah, whatever, we had a lot of little towns, and I honestly, my wife and I went and drove around to some of the other places around the area, and we can't find a lot of Conexes except here in Apple Valley, and so, so we've kinda, and I've got four or five in our neighborhood, so that's all I gotta say. Other than that, I do have some violations, I'm the violations that I have out, they will be a Thursday violation, they're gonna be like three or four out, and they'll be coming due sometime the end of this month, first of next month. These violations, I haven't been contacted, they've probably been out too deep, so then it has to be turned over to the attorney, and violations like cleaning up a yard or something like that just to help, or even dogs and things like that, so other than that, things have been really smooth.
Thank you, Rich.
Roads in Storm Ridge, Ben?
Well, as Richard was talking about earlier, we actually put together a road gang, and it's Lee and Richard and Jerry, Matt and myself, and we mapped out, we've taken sections of the town and mapped them out with all the roads, and now, this next week, we're gonna start hitting a lot of the roads that we think need to be repaired first, or worked on first. So, once we get that, and we'll also ask anybody that has any questions or concern, to give us a yell, and we'll add it to our to-do list, but we'll pry up to it, the list next month on our next meeting. So, if you have any questions on the roads, just yell, we'll do the best we can with the road gang, and hopefully, we're gonna take down the roads in the next few months.
Thank you, Rich, as a little roadway. So, I noticed on the spots on the paved roads that have holes and stuff, you put red marks around them, so that means you've identified them to be repaired? Okay, do we have a timeframe, or is that's what you're talking about?
Well, that's what I'm talking about, and we'll update the list.
That's, that's my department on that one, but what we did is, we marked a lot of those same sort of paint, and we wanted to get an estimate on what it takes to remove all that, cut it, compact it, and put in a proper patch on it, and we had a contractor give us a bid on it, I've gotta work with the water department, see if they're willing to kick in some of that, just a lot of those sort of there patches, and I need to have that conversation, so I just barely have to fit in on it, and it's sizable enough that I didn't feel like there was anything I could just say yes to.
Do we receive that before the winter and rainy season?
I'm sorry?
Before the next rainy season, winter kind of rainy season, they'll be done, or?
I just think the water department needs to take care of those, because they should've been done right at the end of the month, and they weren't ever done, and...
That's true.
I just, anyway, there's, that's a whole different kind of worms that I don't wanna get into right now, but, anyway, we do have an estimate, and that's why they're painted, just so we can identify what we would want to fix if we had all the money in the world, and of course, we don't have all the money in the world, so I'm not sure how much that will be able to fix. We could be, we just, you know, we have that, Apple Valley has that cross in there that they didn't put the pipe in properly, the right T-intersection, you know, that's pretty expensive to pull all that out, re-compare and to fix that properly, we might just leave that on for this, and let's get the, like, water lines, like out here, plenty of property and many others around here, at least get those in, and there could be a hybrid where we try to fix some of them, and we don't have the money to fix them all. We're just trying to tag along to the station, they're bringing somebody out to fix the gas station, and but, when they're mobilizing, that's a good time to grab them, because now, if you can add some jobs on, it helps save you a few dollars, and that's what we're, when we saw that happening, we thought, let's try and maximize our effort, and so, we'll go over the budget, we're gonna counterpay it and see if, if you see anything else apart from that, let me know, and pick it up and help make it happen, so.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else, let's see, Margie, did you have any for mosquitoes?
I do, I'm just buzzing to tell everybody. So, anyways, we have, we're gonna have some...
Hold on a second, hold on a second, what is... What is on the shirt?
You know, we're gonna have one trap out here in Apple Valley, and Hilldale can only have one trap, and so far, you're, today, you know, when I went to the meeting, they collected 1,081 mosquitoes compared to 884 mosquitoes last year or so, we're gonna have a lot of mosquitoes, so.
Who tells about that?
They put traps out, and, you know, around, around, you know, and so then, yeah, they do. There hasn't been any West Nile virus yet, so we're, you know, last year, there wasn't any, and this year, so far, there hasn't been any. And then, Rich, Rich Koff got me these wonderful little, how to protect yourself from West Nile virus, so if anybody wants one, just let me know, and I'll give you one. Okay. This is to help fight these mosquitoes.
So, where are they gonna put that trap next year?
No, by the end of May. It hasn't come in yet, but by the end of May.
Where are we gonna put it?
I don't really know.
Out by your little pond, I think.
Possibly, yeah, if not, I'm calling.
Have you had the older?
Anybody else?
Yes.
These are, oh.
All right, well, thank you. Margaret, we're volunteers for the town, she goes to these meetings to learn about this, so she can share with us, and we thank her for her time to take time out of the day to go do that, so.
Is Margaret...
I knew that we opened up public comments, we've had a lot of them today, but... Hold on a second. Go. Aye. 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 Anybody have any comments? I'll be on what we're gonna share.
The light outside, I think, is always on, I never see it off, so I don't know, is supposed to be on a timer, or?
The light?
The porch light, like the front door?
The illegal porch light?
Okay. It seems to be on 24/7, it seems like she's gonna be on a solar sensor turn off through the day, or on a timer?
Yeah, I've, I'm here, I have notes under today, but, anyway, yeah, it's not on a timer, it's a switch on the wall, so, and it's also illegal, and I need to get down and buy a new one, and have it shined down, as an example, because it's, you know, shining out, that's another problem we have, is illegal lights in Apple Valley, it's another issue we need to address, code violations for, and it's something we're trying to add into our packet for new buildings, to require them to give us some kind of a photograph or whatever of the lights they find on the ceiling on the property, so we can catch it before they build a house, to have proper lights installed from the echo when they're building, so that's one of the things on our new building application, we're installing as well, just to help catch that right off the outset, yes.
Is there any more plans to paint, any more roads in Apple Valley?
Not in a meeting in the future, but I would like to hope that we can do that, as we're trying to organize some of our money, so, it takes quite a bit of money, we've looked at what that takes like to go out, for example, out to Gooseberry, it was not here, but it seemed like it was a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a mile of it, it's quite expensive.
Can we get a grant or anything to...
No, there's not a grant, but, I mean, we can borrow money, we can do all that, and the community, if you guys in Gooseberry want to have it, for example, you know, we could do a, some type of a funding type of thing, and if February they're willing to make one, that's how bad you wanna have it, but we're going to try to get some centers out there, we're gonna try to improve the roads, not just people are always smiling and happy, we're purchasing a, I wanna call it a road groomer, it's made for just grooming, washboard roads is something we can do quicker and easier than a road grader, it covers more ground, and it does a, it's a different job, the way it does it. They use these in the Midwest a lot, because they have tons of miles of dirt roads out there, and we've solicited this company that makes this machine to let us demo it, so we get to get this new machine, use it, see if we like it, if we really decide to buy it. It basically pulls behind a pickup, or one of our service vehicles, a dump truck, whatever it is, we can basically just pull this machine, and it, that's hydraulics, and it grounds the roads, we'll see how that does, and if we like the results of that, then we can look at purchasing the machine, if we like the results. So, anyway, that's in our budget for next year already, if we decide that we'd like to buy it. But that's, the best way to do is try to hit the roads more often, and that's why you wanna groom or something that's easier to use than a road grader, that would touch them up in between these, you know, times when we have a grader out there, so. Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, Rich, 193, big opinion, I think it was the right move for the council to approve the project based on the, amending the master plan. This way, you kill two birds with one stone, you don't have to hold it up anymore, and at least you're doing it the way it should be done, okay?
Thank you.
Two.
Anybody else? I'm gonna do a poll comment. Go. Aye. Aye. And, favorite park?
I think we adjourned the night without housing.
Aye.
No, 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 everybody get it, come get it, I'm gonna get the whole.